The following program is made possible by First State Bank. Offering secure online and mobile banking. First State Bank is ready to serve your financial needs with locations in Warren, Hermitage, and Hampton. First State Bank. The difference is leadership. Member FDIC, equal housing lender.
You're here.
I'm here.
Yeah.
Okay, you all have had a chance to look over the minutes.
I'll go back for minutes for November 9th. The approved has emailed.
Second. All right, motion and second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? If not, then all of those in favor, by a show of hands, unanimous. Okay, now we'll move to the city clerk's report.
Revenue received in the general fund is $2,870,835.52. Revenue used in administrative $1,422.69. Revenue in law enforcement $94,666,91. Revenue received in fire department $29,305,91. Sanitation revenue $651,856,37. Expenses $652,185,99. Drone cover revenue $16,286,252. Expenses $19,141,86. District call revenue $68,795,11. Expenses $81,270,61. Expenses in medical building $38,198,40. Revenue for recreation $9,792,80. Expenses $137,097,01. Call per sale revenue $12,588,92. Expenses $19,541,12. Honor and medical revenue $4,075. Expenses $5,074,70. Children's revenue $22,272,01. Expenses on the same service center $2,512,99. Revenue in early $4,400. Expenses $5,087. Revenue in airport $6,770,91. Expenses $19,95,91. Revenue in open land development $60,000. Expenses $40,252,00. Revenue in the credit fund $59,276,252.
Well, we approve the financial statement as presented by the city clerk. We have motion and second to approve the financial statement. Any discussion? All of those in favor, by a show of hands, unanimous.
And we should also have a cash balance report for the November. Our city sales and new staff received for November is $82,283. For year-to-date total, $848,176,70. We are about 2% in sales. And county sales received $57,290,57. For year-to-date total, $577,154,37. We are about 3% in county tax from this time. And we should have a district court court report for December.
Okay.
That is my report.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Next on the agenda is a resolution to honor Mr. Charles Raymond Colan Sr. Normally, we would have you all come up here, but under the circumstances, if you all would just like to stand so we can see who is here representing the family. If there's some out in the hallway, come on in. Okay, resolution number 8655. A resolution honoring Charles Raymond Colan Sr. Whereas Charles Raymond Colan Sr., known by Raymond or Mr. Colan to those that knew him, he was loved by many and a valued citizen of Warren, Arkansas. And whereas Raymond was a wonderful father survived by his beloved wife, Orlean Colan, and one son, Dr. Charles Colan and daughter-in-law, Tanya. He had four grandchildren, Dr. Asia, Charla, Charlisse, and Charleston. And whereas Raymond Colan was a graduate of Bradley County High School and AM&amp;N, currently the University of Arkansas at Pine Bluff, where he played varsity basketball, he majored in biology education and taught 39 years as a seventh and eighth grade science teacher in the Roston and Warren Public Schools. Whereas Raymond was an active member of the Bethel AM&amp;A Church until his transition. His duties were a semi-school teacher, semi-school superintendent, church trustee, usher, board member, and choir member. And whereas Raymond was a pillar in the Warren community, he served on the Bradley County Hospital Board, Warren Aviation Commission, Warren Planning Commission, and Community Development Block Grant Commission. And whereas Raymond was an added supporter and lifelong fan of the Warren Lumberjacks, where he was inducted into the Warren High School Hall of Fame, he was also a supporter of the University of Arkansas at Pine Bluff. And whereas Raymond will be sorely missed by all, now therefore be it resolved by the City of Warren that Charles Raymond Colan Sr. is hereby honored for the lifelong devotion to his family and fellow citizens. Thank you for coming, and on a personal note, he talked all three of my girls, and they love Mr. Colan. And then one of them had Ms. Colan, and she's the special family to my family. Thank y'all for being here, and you will get a copy of this.
I move that way adopt resolution number 8655.
Motion and second to adopt resolution, all of those in favor, by a show of hands. So thank you very much for being here with us. I wish we could have you up here, but under the circumstances, be sure and tell Ms. Colan that we said hello.
Madam mayor.
Yes, sir.
To the family, I just want to say that we have lost a very, very cobblestone here in Warren, Arkansas. I don't care who, what color you might be, you don't have to be loud to say anything to know that Raymond Colan was effective. Okay? And we should all, you know, we've lost a lot, no matter what. And if we're losing people of his caliber, you know, they're not being replaced. And we sit back and just kind of be lackadaisical about it, but I don't care who it is, they're not replacing caliber people as Raymond Colan. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
I just want to say, I want to thank everyone on behalf of my family, and I know I lived with him all my life. He's the only father I knew, so I appreciate everything you all said about it. Grandma, my rest of my family came with me too. And Mom, I didn't want to bring her in this kind of weather and everything with the vibes and everything, but she appreciates everything. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
You going to be in your office?
No, I'm off. I got this for you.
Okay, the next on the agenda is a limo to sell a vehicle. You've got the limo in your package. It's a truck driver that Dodge does. Motion and second to allow the sale of the vehicle. Any discussion? All those in favor, by a show of hands, unanimous. All right, Charlotte, has anyone signed in to speak?
No.
Okay. Alderman, is there any, can I, do you think Alderman would like to be recognized with this tone?
I would just like to say, we also lost another cobblestone in our community, Tammy Hensley. If anybody's been sick or had a parent that was at home on home health, and she also led our inoculations and everything else in the morning. It just, it just, one of the greatest nurses that also cured about all the patients she had, and I just wouldn't be remiss if I wouldn't go back without mentioning her or nothing.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, is the chief out there? Time for the police report.
Business as usual, I do believe you guys have a copy of the report. Looking over it, since the report was printed, there has been a couple of changes you'd be aware of that right here, we have a reflector, but the Timberland, we have one officer that is designed to move on to green and pastures, he's going to another department, actually Jacksonville, Arkansas. But since this report was printed, we've lost one more officer and have another one pending. This last year is going to be around Christmas of this year. We had a civil service board meeting December the 1st, in which we took six individuals up, we're looking to hire four. Out of the six individuals that we took up for civil service, only wanted to hire two at that particular time, with some issue with the other applicants. They weren't voted to be hired. We'll continue to advertise, see if we can get some people and kind of fill some of these slots. We haven't been, thankfully, rabid with any type of COVID or related illnesses, but we have had to put a couple of officers and dispatchers on quarantine for safety precautions. So, as long as we say, we're just pecking along and we're taking it day by day, we're getting through. That's about all I have to report. Like I said, we are in the process of trying to hire another communications officer also. We're still one full-time short and one part-time short in the dispatch center. We are currently taking out pages from there, but like I said, we're just pecking along and taking it day by day.
So currently, you need two dispatchers, one full and one part-time, and then one officer.
Actually, two officers.
You have two officers on short now?
Well, we will be out of Christmas.
Was it their choice to leave, or did the first, I know you said one resigned, were the other ones, was it their choice to leave?
It was a personal reason, and I was trying to answer that right now. I was probably saying, but it was voluntary in both feelings.
Okay.
The one that's leaving for Christmas, he is, it was his personal reason to leave. He's from up north, and he's moving back to be close to his family. And with the other issue, it would have been a personal matter, we're just saying it was a mutual agreement.
Got you.
What about the one, Thomas Miller, they been reintroduced on that?
No, sir, yes.
Has he applied?
In the past, yes or yes?
Nothing is coming over the phone. Why?
Again, due to personnel issues, I don't know if this.
You can have a motion that goes into executive session to discuss.
Well, I just.
If it's a personnel.
I just feel more comfortable if it had been a personal issue, because not addressing.
You cannot address personnel issues in open forum. However, a motion can be made, and the council can go into executive session to talk personnel. You want to do it?
No, not at this time.
Okay, Alderman, Fraser, do you have anything to add as police committee chair?
I don't right now.
Okay. All right, no other questions of the chief? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have Bar Chief Mike Ashcraft.
Evening.
Evening.
Through the month of November, we had 13 calls, which our numbers are down, thank goodness, had two structured fires, one on Davenport. Davenport's about to get cleaned up, if you know what I mean. And the other fire, the other fire was on McCollum Street, the one in Davenport, we had possibly somebody inside had to do a search. Luckily, they were not at home, and luckily we had to not have to bring anybody out of the house. We did have one extrication, a seat van that was only occupied by the driver. He fell asleep, struck a trio in banks, we had to go over there and help cut him out of the vehicle. But had 10 other various fires, that gives us 329 for the year, that's 74 more than last year at this time. I've got one volunteer out for quarantine right now. I got one volunteer, his grandmother had passed away in the nursing home yesterday, and I'm sad to hear that. He was a good friend of mine. We will be recognizing him. As of Saturday, I lost one of my full-time firemen. This last Saturday, I have just been able to speak to him this afternoon. He quit due to pay, I am told, although a complete exit interview has not been completed, and will be completed next week, hopefully. Ms. Charlotte and I have already started with the advertising process today. She'll be getting that out, advertising for that position to be open, and hopefully we will conclude that in two weeks and get those people to the civil service board to be hired. That's all I have.
I'll do a break. I'm sorry, Calvert, do you have anything?
Yes, well, due to just what the chief's been talking about, and we keep hearing time and time again that we're losing officers, and we sit around, and even with COVID, it's even more so, people are strained with things. And I just want to try to make some type of dent in this, and I would like to make a motion, we raised our start on Saturday to 1375, and after the certified, raise them up to 1403.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion?
Police officers? City staff, police officers? Police officers?
Police or just fire?
I'll take current fire right now, I don't want to step on anybody else's code.
All those in favor, by a show of hands. We've got four, four. All those opposed? Two.
Can I say why? Why I'm not opposed to the raise, but where are we going to get the money? That's my, I agree, everybody needs to pay raise. See, sanitation, fire, police, administrative assistance, everybody, but where are we going to get the money? I mean, I agree, we need to come up with a way to pay, I mean, where are we going to get the money?
We'll have to go back to Ways and Means, I guess, at some point in time and see if we're, but the motion did pass. Okay, Mike?
I have something also. And just like the police department, we have what you call a hazard pay for months, and I would like to make a motion that we go to a hazard pay like the police department with two years, 120, three years, 150 dollars a month, four years, 180 a month, and five years, 210 a month.
I'll second. For the police department?
For the fire department. Police department already has a hazard pay.
All right, there's a motion and a second on the floor.
Okay, okay, all right.
So all those in favor, by a show of hands. Four. All those opposed? Two. Motion passed. Okay, Mr. Toffrey made a motion, and Ms. Hendrick, you second. Did you get the amounts in there?
No.
Did you have those written down, Mr.?
There you go. That concludes my bill.
Opposed, yes. Okay.
Are we making a motion on salaries for these individuals now? For like police, would I make a motion?
Well, y'all are. Y'all are.
This is speaker number, I think, right?
Okay, if there's no other questions of the chief, Ashcraft, thank you.
Chief, thank you. Thank you very much.
Ms. Alderman Fraser made a, say what you're doing with the microphone. So what are we talking about with the microphone?
You just had your report from your city clerk, so we can go back to the financial statement and the cash balances. That information has been shared, and it was shared with the Ways and Means Committee, it was shared today in our packet, as well as at the agenda meeting from the city. If you will look at the cash balances, as well as the revenue that is coming in according to our city clerk, unless these numbers are incorrect, the county and sales and use tax as well, as the city tax are up, they're not down. And then when you look at the cash accounts, maybe we should have asked the city clerk to give us those balances, but when you look at the cash balances in one account alone, as it relates the sales tax economic development, checking, there is $698,756.52. In the other account, it is $387,033.36. And so, I mean, and then in the other accounts, you can just read, but it's there.
So what I'm coming from is, it's not a one-time payout. It's not going to be a one-time salary increase for this year. We're going to be pulling from the economic account for offering from now on for extra 100,000 or whatever dollars. And I talked to the city treasurer today, and he said that we've saved that money up over 10 years, and that if we take the estimated amount of money for salary raises out of it, then it's going to be depleted in 10 to 12 years, and the city will be bankrupt. Now, that's what, I didn't sit down and calculate, pulling out 5% raises, 7% raises. He just said, the money that we have for raises, the council needs to come up with a way to replace it.
The rule of thumb has been to keep around 700,000.
But if we pull.
That has been the rule of thumb.
Right, but if we.
Historically.
If we pull, if we, he says if we keep pulling money more than we put in it, eventually we're going to the freeze.
That's the reason that when we do big ticket items such as fire trucks, et cetera, that we finance them, and we don't pull out 130,000 or 150,000, you know, et cetera.
But like this year, we had the police radios that were 50,000, I think, or the new system down there. We had the cultural center coming up, is going to come out of there. I mean, there's just a, if we could find a way, I don't know if we cut the budget in some areas, and what, I just don't think pulling out of that account for salaries is the way we need to go. I'm afraid that for the future.
Well, how can we get money for these other items?
That's coming, one-time, one-time items are coming out of that account. Like, we bought the 50,000 from the radios.
That's what I'm asking, where, if we not benefit from the money that we're putting into it?
Well, we pull it gradually, but if we pull it gradually for one-time purposes, but if we keep pulling it for salaries every year, you're depleting that account faster than we're filling it up.
We have, we pull for salaries.
We haven't. That's what I'm saying, that's, we haven't pulled it from salaries ever, pulled salaries from there.
I tend to disagree with you.
I mean, that's just what the treasurer said.
We have, we have pulled from, for salaries before, and again, historically, we normally have around 700,000 dollars in that account, and we are way over a million dollars.
Are we there, Mr. Mayor, or who, what? I'm just looking for facts, I go on for facts.
Ask your question again, sir.
Ms. Anderson said we over a billion dollars.
In community economic development, we are.
Right, but we saved it for 10 years. It hadn't been, like, no, he said it's taken 10 years to get to that point.
Historically, we kept in that account around 700,000 dollars. We have never had the dollars that we have now, because we pull for special projects for grants that we had to do matching dollars. Under this administration, we have not had any special projects.
Well, we got the cultural center coming up.
Well, we finished the. Again, we have not had a special project since we had the shooting range as well as the depot. Those are the last two major projects that we have had.
And we, in my understanding, we have the cultural center, and we're going to do some work on the city pool.
Special projects are like sidewalks, or if you're expanding something, if you're getting a grant and you need to have, that's what I refer to as special projects.
And I refer to special projects as a one-time pay. Like, and we had the list from the fire and police, what they need, like a new truck, they need, where is that list they gave us? With all their wants, I think it came with the salary when they asked for the salary Yeah, like, the fire needs air packs, equipment, used, a new pumper truck, parks and wreck needs an ice machine, a printer, replace the lights, police needs a new AC. I mean, there's just a lot of small things that would come, and I may be, I may be totally wrong, but I, this is what I thought would come out of that economic development. Am I wrong there?
Historically, is, yes, that's where they had pulled it from, when there were things that worked, that the budget could not.
I agree that they need, I agree that we need raises, but we have, my opinion is, we have to find a way to do it outside than pulling from the economic development. But like Ms. Henderson said the other day, I'm one vote.
Well, let me ask you a question, what are we getting for the economic development?
Special, special product, I mean, special projects, like the new, if we got new air packs for the pumper, 30,000.
Okay, I'm saying that again, okay. I just listened to Chief Hendrick, you know, telling him how many officers are short and this type thing. I think that we should, and I respect that you determine, but I just think that we should I think that we should, and I respect that you determine, but I just think that we should make, implement an additional raise for the offices as compared to what Hamburg is paying.
Well, I think they need a raise too, but-
I'd just like to make that motion that we do that as far as officers, seventeen dollars, and sergeants, seventeen twenty-seven, and dispatches, twenty dollars. I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second it. Motion in second for police officers, dispatchers.
If the money is, I mean, if we can afford some other things that we not benefited from, I think we definitely, definitely need the offices. No matter what.
I mean, I agree we need it, we just, can we afford it?
We have to find the money.
Any more discussion? All those in favor by a show of hands? Four. Okay, Alderman Burke made a motion to give raises to the dispatchers and the police officers, and we'll get you the exact figures that he said.
Seventeen oh two and for the officers, seventeen twenty-seven for sergeants and twelve dollars for dispatchers. That's compared to what Hamburg is paying.
Compared to Hamburg.
Alderman Henderson seconded. There's been four that have voted for it. All those opposed, show by hands. Two. All right, let's move on to sanitation. Mr. May?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, I'll tell you. Sanitation is running, eddy shit. We're almost completely full sail. We do have one person concerned. So, both families operating as a shooter. Any questions on sanitation?
Is there any extra steps or procedures to take in with the workers' force?
This force.
If we're trying to support-
Yes, ma'am, we are, we offer special natural gloves, disposable gloves for any areas of concern that we have that may have contaminated garbage. We'll wear masks, have hand sanitizer on the truck. Try to maintain a social distance with our guys as much as we can. And they're pretty conscious about that. We've been real fortunate. I know some of the other cities have not been, ourselves, et cetera. About COVID through the sanitation department, I think, last week maybe. And maybe we're having to pull from other departments to collect the garbage.
Okay, Alderman Burke, do you have anything to add, Chair?
I'm the chairman.
Okay.
No, I don't, I don't.
Okay, building and codes?
Building and codes, you gotta let in your packet for our ongoing condemnation list. The contractor that is supposed to tear the house down down in court assured me that he can get to it next week, so hopefully those two lots will be cleaned up. Do that. One additional house that I would like the city council to consider, five oh nine Howard Street. This is a house next door to the house that we removed a month or so ago. During that process, we discovered that that residence was also very forsaken. I'd like to recommend the city council condemn five oh nine Howard.
Second. Motion in second to condemn five oh nine Howard Street?
I can't make a motion.
No, they have, we've got one on, we've got one on the floor. Any discussion? All those in favor by a show of hands, unanimous? Any other questions of Mr. May?
First of all, Mike, before I get to my question, I would just like to pass on the kudos for the job well done on three oh eight Merle. All the neighbors over there are completely ecstatic about the job you did with him over there. And then, uh, on the lot in Alexander and Martin. I had a guy that wanted to buy that lot and put a business in there, he was, he said he called and told that he couldn't change the listing on that lot as far as residential or or business.
Alexander and Martin, I'm not familiar with the lot, but if he-
That's the lot right there on the corner where you make a right turn and go to the D H S? Right across from the-
Where the lot trucks are?
Next to that, next to that junkyard, it's a lot.
I haven't spoke to anybody concerning that lot, but all we have to do is go through the planning commission on the lot, rezone the planning commission with micro recommendation, and then that recommendation will come to the city council for final action, but none of that has been done.
Okay.
It just takes a copy of the deed to get started. Doesn't have to be in his name to start with, but there does have to be a contract to buy between the owner of the property now and here planned on rezoning it with stipulation that if it's approved, that he is gonna buy the property.
Cause he wanted to go ahead on and pay that price upfront, and I told him I'd wait because I see why it's been for sale for so long. And nobody's gonna give that for a residential lot.
No, it was one in seventy-five thousand at one time.
It was unreal.
Seventy-five thousand.
Well, since we had plans to redo the school, all those little bit of ten, twelve thousand dollar houses that went to that house.
Yeah, he wants to come talk to me, I was there, the guy in two steps and he's short.
Appreciate you.
Okay, if there's nothing else, thank you, Mr. May.
Thank you.
Straight Foreman, Mr. Davis?
That boy can't get through there. Other than keeping up with all the work orders or, I don't like calling them blanks and stuff. We put up Christmas decorations, we paved the streets and cleaned some gutters and things, and I know there's a lot more need cleaning, but we hadn't got two of them yet. And that's not all I got.
Alderman Mosley, do you have anything to add?
No, I'm just gonna comment that we had, are we through with?
Yes, ma'am.
Have paved the streets.
Six of them, yes.
Yeah, six.
Okay, if there's no questions?
I have another question. Uh, on Martin Street, on South Martin, right there where the Heritage Apartments used to be? Right there next to the revenue place? Yes. You got a house stuck back up in, in there? Is that an access road right there next to the Heritage Apartments going to?
I cannot answer that question.
Well, could you find out for me?
I don't think nobody can answer the question. I tried to find out, Joe.
Yeah, cause there's a house back up in there that needs access to the road.
My understanding of all that was that the house would be moved. But that was a year or two ago.
Are you in reference to that big white house that's sitting back?
Yeah.
The Creeds used to live in there.
Yeah.
One of those homes back up in there belongs to Joey Caffet at State Farm, cause he bought that. Yeah, cause his, yeah, yeah, I mean, if you're talking about the real big one that's back there.
Yeah.
That belongs to Joey Caffet.
So, we can rent, so maybe somebody could rent it or do something if we get, got that straightened out with the access?
There is an access road, but they want it blacktop, they want it, uh, I've had Davis with swivel on that and so far, we haven't come to no conclusion on it.
Okay. Well, other than the blacktop.
I want my own blacktop, too.
Yeah, other than the blacktop, I couldn't see that, but just to have some access to the house.
Well, did he bring it up to you that he wanted the city to give that to him?
The road?
Yeah.
Well, we have did it in fact.
I know we have, but, uh-
I didn't know that part, maybe didn't know that part of, okay, I figured Ben, if you talk to some of them, that they, it's a, it's a,
I don't know one of these really, there's a, is it Sturgis Street? There's a street sign there somewhere. I think it's Sturgis.
Any?
I'm not really positive, sure.
Okay, this is true.
But in order, the way I understood part of that, in order for the city to give that to him, the owner of the other property gets half of the right away. So, you know, that's about as far as I'm gonna go, cause that's about all I know about that.
Well, Joey has contacted, we've had conversations and it's Mr. May's still out there. But anyway, Ms. Alderman Toffrey, that's being looked at by the owners?
Maybe they won't need you.
No, that's okay. Cause I, it's probably a little bit premature to say what they're gonna do there. But anyway, it is being looked at.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Okay, uh, next is Community and Economic Development. Alderman Marshall, do you have a report?
Okay, we had a meeting, what did you say, two months ago, and we had discussed re-advertising for the R F Q. And each person on the committee was to come up with different items and things that we can add to help promote the city of Warren, the things that we have to offer, and we were going to re-advertise that. So, what I would like to do is make a motion that we take at least seventy-five thousand dollars out of the community to put in the budget, seventy-five thousand dollars from Community and Economic Development to help with that project.
Second.
Motion in second to put seventy-five thousand dollars in the budget for re-advertising on R F Q. Any discussion? All those in favor by a show of hands? There's four. All those against, opposed, two. Okay, now let's move on to Ways and Means Committee, and I'll turn it over to Alderman Henderson.
Thank you. We have actually seven items that's listed under the Ways and Means Committee. And if you would utilize the updated one-page agenda sheet that was given to you so that we will do them in this order. First, I would give an update from our committee meeting. The Ways and Means Committee of the City of Warren held a meeting on November sixteenth, twenty twenty, at five P M. The purpose of the meeting was to complete the twenty twenty-one proposed budget to include the additional data items that were under review and items needing additional information. Mayor Pennington shared the same budget information that included a two percent increase for staff as well as contractual agreement dollars added within the budget. There were no copies of requests from any organization or agency requesting funds presented to the committee. The items that were under review were as follows. Number one, a pandemic bonus for employees recommended by Alderman Fraser. Number two, additional streets meeting repairs from the nineteen streets from the street hearing. Number three, repairs, paint up, fix up for the city pool by Alderman Fraser. Department requests for employee salary increase. Already received was information from the police department, fire department, and sanitation department. We also received by email information from the district court, staff recommendations from the judge. Within the budget, it included one police car. The mayor stated that she included V C D C for eighteen thousand, Chamber eighteen thousand, area agency on aging two thousand, and the Bradley County Museum two thousand four hundred. A copy of the twenty twenty salary survey booklet for cities with populations of two thousand five hundred through nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine was presented to the mayor. On a motion by Alderman Fraser and a second by Alderman Mosley that the items under review should wait until after the pandemic. The motion carried and the meeting adjourned. That is the report. Any questions on the report before I go into the other items? Okay, the first item, if you would, is the area agency contract. And they're asking for, uh, historically, we have given either two hundred dollars and then we increased it to two thousand dollars. And these funds are used for fans and our air conditioners for senior citizens. And I move that the agreement with the area agency on aging of southeast Arkansas in the amount of two thousand dollars be approved.
Motion in second to approve the contract with area agency for two thousand dollars. Any discussion? All those in favor by a show of hands, unanimous?
Okay, the next item listed is economic development contract. It doesn't have listed who that contract is with, but if you'll look at the actual agreement, it is with the Bradley County Economic Development Corporation. As chair of the Ways and Means, I move that the agreement with Bradley County Economic Development Corporation be approved.
Motion on the floor, do we have a second? Second. A second, okay. A motion in second to approve the agreement with Economic Development Services by Bradley County-
What's with that, David?
Okay, the actual, if you'll look with me, the contract says on, on second page, on number six, it says a payment for services described herein, the city agrees to pay V C D C on a monthly basis of one thousand five hundred dollars. And first payment shall be due on January fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, all those in favor by a show of hands? I've got two in favor, all those opposed, four, the motion fails.
The next item that is listed on the agenda is the historical museum contract. And this agreement is with the Bradley County Historical Museum. And the sum is for a year of two thousand four hundred dollars. I move that the agreement with the Bradley County Historical Museum be approved.
Second. A motion in second to approve the contract with Bradley County Historical Museum. Any discussion? All those in favor by a show of hands? Two. All those opposed? Four, and the motion fails.
The next item is the Chamber of Commerce contract. And if you would, it is an agreement with the Bradley County Chamber of Commerce. And it does spell out what the contract includes, but if you'll look on the second page, it says as payments for these services described herein, the city of Warren agrees to pay to the Chamber of Commerce the sum of eighteen thousand dollars to be paid in full by January thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. I move that the agreement for the Bradley County Chamber of Commerce be approved.
Second. A motion in second to approve the contract with Bradley County Chamber of Commerce. All those in favor by a show of hands? Two. All those opposed? Four, the motion fails.
The next item listed is to adopt the resolution setting the budget. And historically, we have done this by- and historically, we have done this by, uh, ordinance. However, uh, the mayor is choosing to go in the direction of, uh, a resolution. So at this time, I refer to you, Mayor, and the resolution number is A six five six. Okay. Resolution number A six five six, a resolution adopting a budget for the City of Warren, Arkansas for the calendar year two twenty-twenty-one and for other purposes. Whereas the mayor has submitted to the City Council for approval or disapproval a proposed budget for the City of Warren, Arkansas for the calendar year twenty-twenty-one, and whereas the following budget has been approved by majority of the members of the City Council at a meeting called for this purpose, and whereas said budget is now on file in the office of the city clerk and shall be available for public inspection during regular business hours. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of Warren, Arkansas, section one, that the following budget for the operations of the City of Warren, Arkansas for the calendar year twenty-twenty-one be and the same is hereby approved, and funds in said amounts are hereby appropriated for said purposes and accounts during the year twenty-twenty-one from time to time as needed. A detailed budget document shall be available in the office of the city clerk for public inspection during regular business hours. Non-restricted expenditures, administration, three hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred, three hundred eighty thousand, three hundred and forty, uh, dollars. Law enforcement, one million, three twenty-six, six hundred. Fire, two seventy-seven, three fifty-six. Sanitation, seven forty-two, eight seventy-eight. Building and codes, twenty thousand, six hundred. District Court, a hundred thousand, four seventy-five. Municipal building, thirty thousand, nine hundred. Recreation, one fifty-two, two twenty-six. Cultural Center, thirty-three thousand, four seventy-one, fifty. Armory Neighborhood Center, fifteen thousand, three fifty. Senior Citizens Center, three thousand, nine seventy-one. The Shooting Range, forty-eight thousand, nine sixty. Airport, nineteen thousand, seven hundred. Other, twenty-six thousand, five hundred. Economic Development, seventy thousand, four hundred. The total general would be three million, one twenty-four, four sixty, fifty. Restricted expenditures and Street Department, five thirty, two ninety-three. The total restricted would be five thirty, two ninety-three. Other accounts, Brevelizer, two thousand, eight hundred. Child Passenger Fund, zero. Court Automated Fund, eight thousand. District Court Cost Fund, fifteen thousand. Sales Tax Economic Development Fund, two hundred thousand. Fireman's Pension and Relief Fund, seven thousand, five hundred. Law Enforcement Fund, four thousand, nine hundred. Law Fee Fund, twenty-three thousand, six hundred. Municipal Judge Retirement Fund, zero. Sales and Use Tax Fund, one million, seven oh five. State Funds, one million, six fifty. Total Other Accounts, three million, six hundred sixteen, eight hundred dollars. Total Budget would be seven million, two seventy-one, five five three fifty cents. And then on the back sheet, you can see that the capital expenditures would be the patrol car, which is in the budget, and then the contract construction is paving, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then the twenty-twenty-one budget includes the following tenure pay, uh, bonus pay, a two percent increase excluding City Council and minimum wage increase to eleven for seventeen employees.
I have a question. So this is, this is not, we really hate to get it.
We need a motion.
I apologize.
I move that we approve Resolution number A six five six.
I've got a motion on the floor, need a second.
A second.
A second, okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve, uh, Resolution number A six five six. Any discussion?
Okay. I don't understand why we just did that when we've changed the salaries already that's gonna reflect, we're gonna change the budget. That's what, I don't understand why we read that knowing we're gonna change it. I mean, I don't, I don't understand why there was a motion made to accept it when we know we're gonna have to change it because we've increased police, economic development, and fire.
You're right.
I don't understand that. I mean, that's what I wanted to say when we were reading. What are we doing? That makes no sense to me.
Well, we'll have to amend the budget if you approve this one.
But how can we approve this one when we're gonna, if we know we're gonna change it?
It would be an amendment to the, this budget. You know, we don't have the facts and the figures right now of how much the motions that, uh, have already been presented will increase the budget. And then we're, you know, we'll have to put the revenue in there from somewhere. So, and you know, Ways and Means can go back.
So we, I don't, I don't.
Any other, any other discussion? We've got a motion and second on the floor.
Item twelve, how much is, how much is the state paying, item twelve?
Item twelve.
Shooting range.
How much is the state?
The grant?
Right, the level, how much will be contributed from the state?
This is current. We, we've not decided on our next steps with the, uh, extension of the shooting range. This is just currently what the expense is out there.
But has the state paid any of that, is what he's asking, is what he's asking?
There may have been some grants in the past. I mean, um, I know that we still do make a payment.
I'm just asking because, you know, I've asked the question several, several times, who all of us has benefited from this, and I've asked over and over, and I haven't yet, any?
All citizens of Warren, I'll tell you that that's probably been the phone call that I get the most about is when the shooting range is going to open.
Okay.
And I will say that, um, Bubba gets people out there all the time that stop and wanna know if they can, and he has to inform them that that's not the kind of range that we currently have.
You mean the rifle?
The rifle and pistol range extension is what we have, uh, will be looking at from game and fish. Now, there will be money coming in from the state from that, Mr. Burks, if that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, well, you know, I just wanted all parties of your, of your community to benefit from it.
Absolutely.
I just don't want the car problem to always be, you know.
The, the ones that, it, it, it's females, males, and, uh...
I had a lot of females asking me about pistol.
Oh, it's great, it's great.
For that concealed carry.
Uh-huh, they're, they're, they're just, one.
That's all, that's what, you're, it's benefiting from, that's it.
And it will be a revenue stream for the city. It will, uh, produce more revenue than just the, the current facility that we have, so, but that'll be.
Can I, can I say something else about this?
It's still open for discussion.
Okay, so we've raised the police and we've raised the fire, but can you imagine Warren without trash pickup? Sanitation? You know, that's, I mean, they're all important. Don't get me wrong, everybody needs races, but go without trash for a month in Warren streets. I mean, I don't, I, I don't know, I just, I think if we're gonna, if we're, if it passes to do two, then we should include everybody.
Have we ever done a job classification?
I have no idea, Mr. Van.
The Police Department and the Fire Department are uniformed classifications, so they are in a different category than the, the others. However, if you'll look on the back of the, uh, actual resolution, all employees will receive a two percent?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it, uh, we've got a motion and a second, so I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor, uh, to pass this, uh, budget resolution, number A six five six? Show of hands? All, uh, opposed? So it's unanimous not to pass the budget, so that's, uh... And I have fulfilled my statutory duty by presenting the budget, so now it will be, I guess, back in the hands of the Ways and Means Committee.
It's back in the hands of the administration because you have motions. It's back in the hands of the administration. The last item that we have listed is to adopt a resolution setting the various official salaries for twenty-twenty-one, and within back sheet, you will find the salaries for the mayor. Forty-five thousand, six hundred fifty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. The city clerk, forty-two thousand, seven hundred fourteen dollars and twelve cents. The city treasurer, twelve thousand, seven hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty-one cents. The city attorney, nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars, seventy-five cents. Alderman, three thousand, there was no two percent. And if you will look, uh, there was, uh, listed an emergency clause to ensure that they are paying, uh, timely. I move that Resolution number, well, yeah, you read it first, I'll refer it back to the mayor.
Resolution number A six five seven, a resolution fixing and appropriating the salaries for various city officials for the year twenty-twenty-one and for other purposes, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Warren, Arkansas. Section one, for the year twenty-twenty-one, the mayor of Warren, Arkansas shall receive a salary of forty-five thousand, six fifty-three, sixty-eight, payable in equal monthly installments. Section two, for the year twenty-twenty-one, the city clerk of Warren, Arkansas shall receive a salary of forty-two thousand, seven fourteen, twelve, payable in equal monthly installments. Section three, for the year twenty-twenty-one, the city treasurer of Warren, Arkansas shall receive a salary of twelve thousand, seven sixty-nine, forty-one, payable in equal monthly installments. Section four, for the year twenty-twenty-one, the city attorney, including all assistant city attorneys, shall receive a total salary for said office of nineteen thousand, two hundred seventy-five. Section five, for the year twenty-twenty-one, the Alderman of Warren, Arkansas shall each receive a salary of three thousand. Section six, if any section or part of a section of this resolution or the application thereof to any person or circumstances is held to be unconstitutional or invalid, shall invalid, invalidate, shall not affect the remaining provisions of the application thereof for, thereof of this resolution. And to that end, the provisions of this resolution are declared to be severable. Section seven, all resolutions and parts of resolutions in conflict therewith are hereby repealed to the extent of any such conflict. Section eight, emergency clause, the City Council of Warren, Arkansas has determined that the retention of experienced and knowledgeable city employees and officials is necessary to the efficient operation of the city's business and to the maintenance of the peace, safety, welfare of the residents of the city, and that adequate compensation is a necessary part of the retention of the said personnel and officials. And to that end, an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and the provisions of this appropriation resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval.
I move that we adopt Resolution number A six five seven.
Second.
Motion and, uh, second to adopt, uh, Resolution A six five seven. All those in favor, by a show of hands? Motion carries unanimous.
That is the report of the Ways and Means Committee. However, Mayor, I would like to be recognized.
Yes, ma'am.
As a member of the Warren City Council, I would like to make a motion that in addition to the items listed in Resolution number six five seven, the twenty-twenty-one capital expenditures general account with law enforcement, one car, of thirty thousand, the twenty-twenty-one capital expenditure for streets, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, given a total of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, and also included in Resolution number six five seven for city employees and elected officials as appropriate, tenure bonuses to be paid in twenty-twenty-one, the Christmas bonus to be paid in November, twenty-twenty-one, the two percent increase excluding City Council and the minimum wage increase from, uh, for twelve employees going to eleven dollars. I would move that a one-time pandemic pay for all critical and essential city employees be paid in the amount of three hundred and fifty dollars in the first pay period of the twenty-twenty-one budget. That is my motion.
Most, do you, you got that written down for the, the clerk, okay? Motion, uh, and second to include in the budget a one-time pandemic bonus of three fifty per for, for critical and essential city employees.
Alderman Henderson, did you say twelve employees or seventeen?
It's seventeen.
It was seventeen.
Seventeen.
Seven, eleven dollars for seventeen employees.
Okay, are you going to define the critical?
Critical and, and essential would include all of your staff, I mean...
Okay, well, that's, that's what I was wanting to clarify.
Yes.
For all employees?
Yes.
Okay. All right, motion and second on the floor. Any more discussion? All those in favor, by a show of hands? Uh, unanimous? Uh, you have a report, uh, Planning Commission had no meeting. Aviation has had no meeting. Water and Sewer Commission?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The, um, historically, the Housing Authority and the Water and Sewer Commission have given races to their employees. Are they, uh, doing anything this, this, uh, physical year?
The Water Commission is waiting to see what we do, and they follow suit with us.
In the past, they have not, they have given more.
She is, she is following suit with us.
Okay, and what about the Housing Authority?
I do not know about the Housing Authority.
Okay, just kidding.
Uh, okay, Water and Sewer, you've got their report. Parks and Recs, is Mr. Cal still with us?
Yeah, he's out there.
You've got his report in your packet?
Good afternoon.
Hello, Jay.
Um, everything's going pretty good. Um, only major expense probably coming up on something would be on a foot percent. We had a water line, they think, might as well go over, but it's busted and took a few days to find it, so probably a lot of water behind, but they got fixed and everything, but that's another. Only thing I have, ordinary, that I would have, wanted to know.
Have you gotten any bids coming in for the West Side Pool, for the city pool?
Supposed to have two coming in next week. Um, doing a little, getting a bike, you know, contracting a little.
Thank you.
I'm gonna see if they allocated for the pool.
I don't know, it's that far.
We don't know, we were just getting bids, trying to, like, different, trying to see, just to spruce it up.
Okay.
Um, we don't wanna mess with, not mess with, we don't wanna... Our system's so old, the filtration system, that if we start working with that, then we gotta change a lot of things. We're grandfathered in to a lot of pauses, but, uh, we're gonna make it look more...
Tangy, tangy.
Yeah, presentable, more acceptable.
What you have listed was for salaries. That was already listed.
Right, but this is, what we, what I had talked about earlier in the meeting was to pull that from, it's a one-time payment special project. I mean, it may not pass.
I know, but his question was how much was already in there, and it was strictly...
Oh, I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I guess that's what I was saying.
You asked how much was already in the budget?
Yes.
Yes.
How much is allocated?
Oh, there's, there's, we just have salaries in the budget that we're gonna use the, the economic development money for a one-time to spruce it up.
Okay.
What about the bathroom?
Something, we're gonna fix those to.
The stalls.
Yeah. You know, I took those stalls out when I first took it over for different reasons, but now I think it's back to our, our, our patrons can use a little privacy, but for a while.
This is agree.
Yes.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, you've got the housing authority commission report in your packet. Cultural center, Alderman, would you give us a date on what happened last week?
Okay, so we originally had, when we first started meeting with cultural center and architect, we budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for the improvements to correct the foundation, and then we received four bids. The lowest was one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars, the highest was two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred. And we allocate, the city was gonna, had specified they would give fifty thousand, the school would give fifty thousand to meet that one hundred thousand dollar estimate for fixing the foundation, but the first phase, if we went with the lowest bid, would cost one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. So we're gonna have to give more money, and this is not something that aesthetics, it's for foundation, I mean, if you, when we toured it, the walls are cracked, the floor's uneven, and this is to put stalls for, in the bathrooms for disability. They're gonna, we're gonna add a bathroom for.
Was it a family restroom?
Yeah, it's gonna be a, it, it was cheaper, instead of making both bathrooms accessible, to add a bathroom that's a family accessible bathroom. But, um, so we're gonna have to come up with half of this, if, if we decide to go with that lowest budget, we're gonna have to come up with half of the sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. And we're waiting to, for Mr. Cornish to the school board, am I right? The school board's gotta meet and discuss what they're gonna do, but that's the first phase. The total to revamp, I guess you could say the, the cultural center was one thou, one million, six hundred and one thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. If everything has to be, if everything was done, it needed to be done to bring it current. And that includes, um, exterior paint and repair exterior walls, new seating, house and stage lights, a new sound system, which is two hundred and seventy-five thousand, and that's badly needed. A new fire alarm system, sprinkler system, new flooring on the auditor, in the auditorium, interior paint, um, demolition and miscellaneous bonds and overhead. Anyway, that's gonna total with the one, the one sixty-seven now, it's gonna be more than one million, six hundred and one thousand dollars. So anyway, that's what we're looking at down the road.
It'll be cheaper to build a new building.
So this is what turning is behind, okay?
Yes, sir. And when we met with, um, the, when we did a walk-through this summer, we, there's a lot of things, you know, that could bring it up to that, to be, I mean, it's just, it's behind times, you're right, Mr. Zach. So that's my report, and I'll, I'll know more after.
After, thank you, after we see what the school board.
Yes.
Essentially, yes, the, my, we can still want to be this, you know, move forward.
Question, ma'am.
I might have an answer.
Yeah, you will. Uh, was the contractor that's gonna be doing the work on the new elementary school, was that able to put a bid in?
I don't know who the contractor is, but they're coming to, from.
Oh, God, yeah. I don't know the town, they're from Arkansas, but they're gonna be here anyway, I was just wondering if they're gonna bring their folks, and I already have said.
I don't think, um, one was from Louisiana, one was from in-town, one was from northern Arkansas, I think, and one was from, do you know where the other one was?
One was from Sheridan, one was from Crossit, one was from Sterling, Louisiana, and then what, the low bid was the more, now, Alderman. Tofrey, the architect engineer that put this together is the same one that's working on the school, that's Mr. Uggins, so we worked with him.
But we don't know if it's the same construct, maybe, probably these aren't the same construction.
I don't sound like it, officer.
It would probably be a, a bigger construction company to do what the school is getting.
Well, they do all, they do all of them, in fact, we, now, now let it go. Some problems.
Okay. Uh, is there any unfinished business?
I would like to make a motion, we need the committee just like they are, the chairman.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion and second, so we've committed in place, all those in favor by a show of hands? Unanimous? Are, are any opposed? Okay. Uh, any public statements, no one signed in? Announcements, the Christmas holiday lunch, uh, is, you've got an invitation come by out of the sports complex, and there'll be a drive-through, and we'll hand you your, your lunch. I hate that we have to do it this way this year, but for everybody's safety purposes, that's what, how we're gonna handle it, Christmas holidays of the twenty-fourth to twenty-fifth. The municipal, Berkeley Winter Conference is the thirteenth and fifteenth. I need a motion to pay bills for November.
I make the motion, we pay the bills for November.
Second, a motion and second to pay the bills, all those in favor by a show of hands? Unanimous, uh, set the meeting for January, um, the seventh will be the agenda meeting, the eleventh will be the city council meeting. Now, uh, motion to adjourn. I move that resolution. Okay, second. Second, and all those in favor. Okay, thank you.